All right, roll call.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Public participation, okay, I got one, okay. Individual who wish to address the board must speak from the podium and state their name and address for the record. Points should be made clearly and concisely within five minute time limit. One person's time may not be yielded to another. Comments may be directed to the board with courtesy and respect. Any responses from the board will be delivered in light kind. Tom, you got the floor buddy.
My name is Tom Riedinger. My address is. For the next work session you have kind of set aside, talk about the overlay district. But I'd like to share some thoughts prior to that to give you. And recently I was told that zoning overlay district may not be something that would fit our small community. So some thoughts I had on that, that perspective. I think an overlay district can be preemptive as well as promotional. It's preemptive. The overlay district does not necessarily architectural design document. Not have a corridor lined with quaint brick buildings. This is this design tied on existing pattern. So that's a challenge. Have basically residential property lined heavily traffic and potentially commercial. May not always be possible maintain a small community look. Some attempt paid return is not approved. preemptive component, our trustees more say about what. As much as to what. Such an approach, they also lower the risk. For buyer seller investor feeling unduly discriminated against because a component of their proposal. Was beyond a comfort level, unwritten idea of what we. Overlay district sets guidelines for what our expectations are. Part of our vision. Always want to keep in mind that our township is in a very valuable geographic place. Immediate southern border, main township, and as you know, the largest townships entitled by population. They are approximately six miles from the city of Hamilton. Not be seen for county and seeing in Renaissance. Also at the crossroads of two major highways, both of which lead to expressways. And within the past year, two large tracks of open farmland has been seen a change in ownership. The pressure for development seems very likely out never. So for planning and whatever form it may take is a reasonable course of pre. It's promotional. If an objective of overlay district is zoning is to maintain a small community feel. That should be the big lies in marketing the area. Our development is welcome and safe is important. Keep in mind that there are three services of benchmarks of terror, poor community overthinking. Back to the potential development. Benchmarks, they staffed, that's the police department. They trained and prepared fire and emergency. And if I take well. Us that develop and support. This presence of a district is not a hypothetical. We have examples of transition of space use completely down the street from our administration. Now. The district guideline may have resolved. Uh, it's quite great. As we know, structures have changed. Keep in mind that even with this planning, resistance to development of well conceived is normal and effective. Even well designed improvement will generate varying opinions. Example of Fairfield's reimagining of. Think it's Marsh Park. Where did hiking trails, a restaurant, amphitheater and the medities. But there were other voices that wanted to keep. Not any improvement. So as community leaders, you face a choice and that is to be reactive or proactive. And for growth, being prepared is essential. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tom. Very important. Do your research. Thank you. Discuss it.
I think we're being proactive. Or I, I think that the subject has kind of come up out of the fact that zoning failed. And this was kind of left in the wake of it. And I think it is a thing that we could and should seriously look at. Yeah, I appreciate your, your thought and your words as usual. Anyone else?
Okay, move the adoption of motion twenty four dash zero four six. To appoint administrator Lori Kyle. As the acting official, uh, fiscal officer for the purpose of taking minutes for the meeting. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Move for the adoption of motion twenty five dash twenty zero four seven. To dispose of the reading of the minutes from April third, twenty two thousand twenty five regular meeting. And April seventeenth, two thousand twenty five work session. Your motion?
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Move for the adoption of motion twenty five dash zero four eight to approve the minutes of April third, two thousand twenty five regular meeting. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Move for the adoption of motion twenty five dash zero four nine to approve the minutes of April seventeenth, two thousand twenty five work session. Need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes ma'am. Chief Robert?
Sir? Come on up. And I were going to swear one more news and police officers, Alicia was actually. Also a good year ago and then went to college and she heard that I came out here as chief. Like I gotta go back and work for this guy. Great things about it, so we interviewed her and we all, the whole entire board right away was like. Absolutely, we have to hire her. And then on day one, she was giving me shots in my office and I was like, really Cameron, day one? Not even waiting, so she is, she gonna, she gonna pin it really great with this township. She brings a lot of experience out there and she's going to be one of our future female. I know she's gonna do a great job, so. Yes, sure, yes, if I'm finding parts, it'll be great.
Hi, after me, raise your right hand, yes ma'am. Hi, Alicia Camer.
Hi, Alicia Cameron.
Do somebody swear to uphold the constitution and laws of the state of the United States of America?
Do somebody swear to uphold the constitution and laws of the United States of America?
The laws and constitution of the state of Ohio?
The laws and constitution of the state of Ohio.
The laws and ordinance of Ross Township, Ohio.
And the laws and ordinances of Ross Township, Ohio.
And it will discharge the duties of the police officer constable to which I have been appointed.
And I will discharge the duties of the office of police constable to which I have been appointed.
To the best of your ability.
To the best of my ability.
Thank you very much.
Oh no, we're not done with you. You don't have to do any speeches though. Trustees, you guys want to come take pictures? Come on up, you guys.
Center her up a little bit. There you go.
I'll stand in your shadow. Thank you. Family, come on up.
Family? If you have kids.
Thank you guys, appreciate it.
We'd be proud.
Oh yeah, you gotta pin the badge.
Oh yeah.
Sorry, gotta pin the badge. I got it, I got it, I get you.
Get the video going. Take your time, take your time, she's not ready yet.
I'll send it to him. There we go.
Before we go any further, I want to mention, you saw maybe a sign on our window here. Reason our fiscal officer is not here, she's in a play up in Hamilton, fiddler on the roof. Great play, if you ever seen one, she's playing the wife of Golda. She's been looking very forward to it, she's been doing this for twenty years. She loves it, so I think it's seventeen dollars a head. Take your time and go see it this weekend, alright? I. Okay. Um, okay, we have presentations. Rich Soros, Chief Operating Officer for Energy Alliance Incorporated and Electric Irrigation Renewal.
Welcome to the board for having me back out. In eighteen months since your first started. We've. Fishtailor shared a memo with you about how things have been and where it's going. Obviously up to this point, very happy with the success of the program. Paid roughly twenty one percent compared to the C P A rates. Three five dollars a person since it started in the, in the summer of twenty four. And I think the, the thing was, this board reaction was to carry it through two summers. This summer as well. And what's key about that is right now Duke's rate is about eight cents per K W H. Deeper than that, Duke filed their rates today for June of this year and they're going to go up ten point four. So your residents are going to save roughly four percent. Starting this year. Taking the action, the summer was key. Every person will save a hundred dollars starting in the month. Things have changed a lot though in the, in the last year and a half. Prices overall, we're seeing here, the Duke's price going up for ten cents. Prices have gone up and then really the main driver of that is called capacity. Too many things that go with your, your aggregation price or the energy. So you can think about that as what it costs a sort of a producer to either produce the energy. Or some, you know, somebody to buy from them and then sell to us. Capacity. Capacity is what all of us have to pay for to make sure that there's enough generation of power plants out there. To make sure that they can generate the power. Uh, right now there are significant concerns here in the west, it goes out to the east. On if there is enough generation to take care of what all of us need to consume. Things like large data centers, large industrial, they're great for economic development. It beat down the energy system. A lot of it. That's why you see places like Microsoft trying to cut their own deals with, you know, places like Constellation. To buy their own power from nuclear power plants, right? Like take it right from the power plant, they try to. Because again, it's issue. Prices is of how much supply there is right now, how much demand there is right now. Or how much supply. So that, that first chart of memo, you'll see kind of going into this upcoming summer where Duke's getting its big increase. Is that the price of capacity is up by about four that compared to today. Every cent every G one G. So it's going up by about four and a half. We don't even have the numbers for next year yet. But the entity that takes care of the options for that capacity have already settled what the next two years are going to be. So don't get, again, don't get too caught up into the actual details. But we're at two hundred seventy dollars a megawatt day now. We know that the next two years will be anywhere between one seventy, three twenty five. So you know, these higher prices are here to stay for at least the next two years. And that's already been. Besides the capacity, you know, the cost of energy, so again, that second component has also increased. That's what that, that second chart that I show you here, kind of showed you where markets were. Decided your last contract and kind of where prices are right now. So those two pieces significantly higher than where we were at this point, two years ago, I guess a year and a half ago. So you know, that, that's leading to higher prices. So the, the last table on that memo shows you where results came back from the auction. And we're talking about prices going up. So we can get something maybe less than that. When I say less, you know, we're not eight point eight, you know, eight point nine, but seeing something pretty close to nine cents is. But again, this is all about competing against Duke, you know, giving your, your residents an alternative. And you can use generations of all. So you know, even if we can get a price pretty close to nine cents, you're still. Ten or eleven percent. Duke software. Still have the opportunity to go out and go buy their own, you know, go out shop on their own, stay with you. Yeah, this is, it's an opt out program, but do not have to stay with it. That option. They've also in front of you is legislation to allow. Uh, to sign an agreement with a supplier still to be determined because they're still negotiating with both. Um, and right now, you know, the consideration of going at least a twelve or maybe even a fifteen term. Say fifteen months because I think if we can get a price somewhere in the, in the eight, seven, eight, eight experience, you know, we may want to take this thing through next. Kind of like you did last time, taking it through summers. Their program right now will automatically get through at least the summer and next summer. But we may want to extend that a little bit further. Through the fall because. This is going to go anywhere lower anytime soon. Same time, I think going a full two years is a little bit too much. There's just a lot of uncertainty. At least twelve months. Two months, but don't want to go a full. Typical rich fashion. Very quickly.
Seeing more savings on the second year? More so than the first year?
Uh, that's more because of timing. So because your program, you chose to go from last spring to the summer. For the summer, that's where you'll see the big savings because, you know, where your rate's still flat for expenses last spring. Duke's rate is going to go. So yes, you're going to see substantial savings this summer.
Are, are you going to? Did I hear you right or wrong that you're going to be able to do that again? Or is it only going to be for one year now?
So that, that's where, you know, I'd like for you to, to give your administrator the ability to look at either twelve or eighteen, sorry, twelve or fifteen months. So from January to September of next year, so that's twelve months. September of next year, fifteen months. And then we'll kind of, you know, kind of talk it through, right? Talk it through with her as we're getting prices from the suppliers to say, you have to make sense to either stay at twelve. Next December, so it, we'll, we'll let, we'll see what the market kind of shows us over the next couple of weeks and make a decision. But legally, you have to listen.
Um, we were at six point one three cents. I guess it's all guessing game, kind of. There's, I guess I would say, what's the chance of it going under nine cents?
Um, well, so, well, so Duke's, so Duke's price is set till May of next year. So that, so that's where we'll kind of look at some things. Where I would make the, the suggestion to maybe go again, the, the second fall would be Duke's around eight cents right now. We're dealing with those kind of lower, that first chart, the lower capacity prices. Knowing that capacity prices are going to be high for the next two years. I, I think we can make a pretty educated risk to take it into that fall. But still avoiding the full two years in case things go the other way. But we know Duke's rates are going to be very high. That's already, that's it, I mean, that's what they are.
Open up to the floor, anybody have any questions, gentlemen? Thank you, sir. Ross Community Foundation grant award to the police department.
Uh, just real quick, just by fair introduction, so Martha reached out to me and we were discussing this with the K nine program. And to be aware, was pro foundation of a grant that would be coming up, so I, I wrote that grant with assistance. Thirty two hundred dollars is what they're awarding us today. That's going to help pay for kennel, the gate that we have to have to protect the dog, um, the concrete and everything. So I just wanted to tell them, uh, it's such a blessing to see such a community outpouring. Um, for support for something that is going to really help us save lives out here in the town. Thank you.
Uh, we have a couple of. I would like to do. And, uh. Officers, are you joining?
Uh, sorry to the.
Good. Um.
Really big chat.
On behalf of the Ross Community Foundation, we'd like to present a debt thirty two hundred dollars. Ross Police Department and their. And the implementation of. Pictures for the foreigners, for the foreigners to watch.
Can they see me over top of this?
I was going to say something though.
You're not going to be the first one.
Thank you very much, ladies. Much appreciated.
Can we take one with the board up here? Will you get us a picture?
Absolutely.
Oh, you're getting a picture. We got the offset.
And I see you guys.
That's fine, Sarge is also.
Putting photographer?
Are we? Brad, okay?
Yeah.
Hi.
Can you get us? Thank you.
Like a professional, he was very.
He was, he looked like he knew. Thanks.
Thank you Martha.
So back in the day when Trekkersons were here, Mike Trekkerson had a dog he left in the back for their yard dog, Brittany Span. So I guess we're not going to use our dog and leave him sitting in the back, are we? Okay. Thank you ladies for your kind generosity and support of the township and its people. Much appreciated, most people don't realize what you do. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much. Reports, fiscal officer, stand in.
Uh, bear with me, I have big shoes to fill this evening. Uh, first are the certifications for P O's and checks written since the last regular meeting. Each trustee needs to, sorry, sign those.
This one's P O. That's so little. Can't read any of it. I can't read the most of it.
Included in the reports in front of you, there is a receipt export since the last regular meeting. And there is some color coding on the report. The green indicates restitution from a case in the police department. The yellow indicates two grants, one for the police department, one for the road department. And the blue indicates memorial donations to the fire department. In memory of John Roberts. And combined, it was a total of three hundred and ninety six dollars. Also included before you, the management reports for April. The revenue summary and the fund summary, as indicated on the reports, we are thirty four percent through the year. There's also an appropriation status report. Once again, thirty four percent of the way through the year. Uh, each of you will need to sign the appropriation supplemental report as of April thirtieth. There is the credit card attestation that President Young will need to sign. And just to make you aware, on this report. We did have an employee that inadvertently used his township credit card for a personal expense. He, uh, realized it right away, the fiscal officer had him. Provide payment directly to First Financial Bank for that amount and gave it to the fiscal officer. So she submitted that. Along with the township's portion of the amount due, so, uh. The, the total amount due was seven thousand two hundred forty dollars and eight cents. The township's portion was seven thousand one hundred thirty eight dollars and seventy two cents. So President Young needs to. The bank reconciliation for April, all three trustees need to sign that. And since the transition to the. And since the transition to the. Since the transition to the hybrid checking account, the amount of interest that the account is receiving is twenty-eight percent more than this time last year. He wanted to make the board aware of that. And finally, for your consideration would be a motion to pay the bills. And we need a motion to pay the bills.
Want to see our hybrid checking. Purpose to approve and pay the bills. Move adoption motion twenty-five dash zero five zero to pay the bills as presented through the fiscal officer. Considerate of purchase orders in second.
Second.
Any discussion? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Administration. Use is update.
I neglected to pass down the minutes after the board voted and approved those. So I will send those down now for board signature. Tonight, my only real report is a nuisances update and it has a report. The burn structure on Rob and I was waiting and have just today received the asbestos inspection report. There is no asbestos, so I will be able to move ahead now with demo of that property. So that was good news. Hopefully, that's the last thing standing in our way. And for board consideration, I have three resolutions and one motion. The first resolution would be to authorize all actions necessary to affect or otherwise continue a governmental electric aggregation program, much like Rich discussed. The second resolution is to enter into a new agreement with Ohio Deferred Comp Governmental four fifty-seven B plan. Just several months ago, the board had to do the same thing with the equitable plan that you provide to employees here. There've been some IRS requirements that these plans needed to incorporate. But that's what that resolution is for. The third resolution is a nuisance on Moeller Drive. And I didn't add, we need a motion to change the date of the May work session from the regularly scheduled Thursday to Wednesday, May fourteenth. That allows a school board president Greg Young to attend the work session to discuss the zoning overlay district. That's all I have this evening.
Okay, the nuisance update, the one was not one on service, we weren't going to discuss, but the one on Moeller, it still has not been taken care of and we are going to go ahead further with that, okay?
Yes.
Consideration for legislation. Purpose authorize all actions necessary to affect or otherwise continue a governmental electric aggregation program. Move for adoption resolution twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five dash zero two five, two eight. Authorizing the township to enter into an electric aggregation agreement with electrical supplier recommended by Energy Alliances Incorporated. The community's energy aggregation consultants and authorizing the township administrator to enter into a subsequent agreement with regard to the program to reduce the costs as needed. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Purpose to approve the amendments of Ohio deference and compensation governmental plan for fifty-seven B. Move for the adoption resolution to two twenty thousand, twenty-five dash zero two nine, entering to an agreement with the Ohio deference compensation to write amended governmental four fifty-seven B plan for the Ross Township employees and authorizing the township administrator to execute the agreement. I need a second.
Second.
Go call. I'm sorry, any discussion? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, the township administrator has provided evidence of a nuisance violation exists on the property of Moeller Drive. This resolution declares the property via nuisance and orders an abatement. Move for adoption resolution two thousand, twenty-five dash zero three zero, declaring a nuisance for existence vegetation and other accumulated debris in twenty-five oh five Moeller Drive. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Purpose, May work session date change. Move for the adoption motion dash twenty-five dash zero five one, to change the date from May work session to Wednesday, May fourteenth, instead of the regularly scheduled date of May twenty fifteenth, two thousand, twenty five. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Fire Department Chief.
Evening, but a couple items for the board tonight. First one, there are monthly fire in the ass. Four per month, April. We did a hundred and eighteen calls for service, sixty-eight EMS and fifty-one fire calls. Received mutilate five times and we also provided mutilate five times. Third page, you'll see the three-year comparison. This month was both for us compared to the last couple months. Monthly inspection report, Lieutenant Myers completed eight new inspections and four re-inspections. And he has eleven scheduled next for this month already. He also installed eight smoke detectors in the community. Personnel updates, Lieutenant Meyer will begin his fire emergency service instructor course this month at Sterling Oaks. We had two other members, Will Black and Morgan Mason, complete the water rescue tech and boat operator class in Colray. That was a forty-hour week-long class they took with other local departments down on the river. So they're now water rescue technician. The final item I have is consideration for legislation to hire part-time firefighter medic Joseph Campbell. Joe is a full-time firefighter medic for the city of Fairfield and he worked alongside me with Oxford for several years. That's all I have for you this evening.
Right, consideration for legislation, the purpose to approve the hiring of a part-time firefighter medic Joseph Campbell to the position of part-time firefighter medic at the rate of twenty dollars per hour. This is my appointment and subject to the company completion of all pre-employment testing and in accordance to current staffing summary and rate, pay rate of resolution. Any a second?
Second.
Discussion? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Road Department.
Paving up the. All the pulled up. Done on black. Been new. Did yesterday, so it's ready. According to their schedule, should be by sometime in the next week. Like that. Another thing I have, I have a seventy-two inch eighty feet long on Central Road. We were, I was aware of it, we inspected it last fall. Just last week, we realized there's. Falling some. But we got a new plan, we're going to fill concrete the front sixty feet of it, we're going to have to get an adapter man. Have on a piece of plastic pipe on the end. To build the underneath of it, so it'll. There's going to be some. Lost in the. I probably happen sometime in July, so I'll be able to bring. Estimate in the next year. Get a piece of pipe and we may have to run it. Deep in the ground and it's. Put that in the estimate with. I had the county engineer, deputy engineer, and he came out and he brought a member of his faculty. But they're the specialists that can go from a pipe to a small pipe if you're going. Good, and it looks fantastic.
Having existence here.
So that's, that's what came out before and they gave me some recommendations. They said, I got, I'll get the.
All right, Police Department Chief.
Thank you, sir. People stats calls to service, we had two hundred and sixty-six calls for service. Self-initiated activities, we had a hundred and sixty-two bin checks, hundred and forty-seven make payment checks, twenty-one extra patrol traffic stops. Uh, community engagement events, we reached uh six thousand, six hundred people for our community engagements. The Matt Abercamp five K pursuit, which is one of the bigger ones that I'll do, and I know I'm getting in trouble for this. Our very own Lori down there came in second place, running in her division and our recruit RJ came in first place. And they passed me so fast that I pulled a muscle watching it as I walked. So it was, we had a great turnout, we had our other recruit Cameron Robbins came out and ran it. Our SRO Madison ran it, I did not because they were way too. For me. We also went to the White Oak Church Easter egg drop. Saw the video of the helicopter dropping it out there. I was up there, there was about fifteen hundred people there. I attended the Lions Club Easter egg contest here at Ross High School along with our SRO and the Axon Road Show. And I also went to Abo Wellness Seminar with my department of safety. Goals to improve this program, officers and staff. Training for the month, our SRO went to an interrogation class. Lieutenant Robbins went and got recertified for less lethal. He goes stilts, just completed her FTO training and she now has, I'm higher, Alicia out there, riding with her at night, going through the FTO program. And LT and I attended the OACP Chiefs in Service Conference, which is not only is sort of goes towards our certification as a certified law enforcement executive. We got to hear some really good leadership topics, got some continuing professional training credits. It got to hear Gordon Graham with Lexipol speak, which is one of the most amazing speakers I've ever witnessed with a crowd, the way he works. So that was good training for us. He was a first-time attendee, so I made sure everybody knew that up there at the conference, so they would give him a hard time. Speaking of Lexipol, we just got in the mail our Lexipol gold standard for our policy and procedure manual, which is again another year that we did this. I would like to take credit for it, but Lexipol does a good job of making sure we are in compliance with Ohio Collaborative and that we're putting out best practice policy for our people so that if they follow a policy, they're usually going to be doing the right things out there. I just have a couple of things. I want to thank our road superintendent. Because him and his crew came out, we got a donation from Mark York for a couple of LED lights. And I asked him if they would, it looked like a dungeon out there. It was actually scary, I was scared to walk through the garage at different times. And I thought several of those bulbs were going to fall down. So they went in there, took out all those old halogens so they won't fall and hurt any of our people and put up LED lights and cut off the power to all the other lights that weren't lighting anything. And it looks like, it looks like daylight in there right now, which is not only is that safe so our people can see and from a risk management perspective, it also is nice to be back there. So we have a township cleanup day that Lori has started and we're going to get the weight room and everything fixed up out there, clean everything up. And it looks, it looks really good out there and it's certainly going to save us money over the amount of lights that draw on power, but they did a great job. Let's see, so. Couple of grant things, we just finished up the grant process for the two years of funding. I just did receive, Lori and I signed off on the two full years of funding for the body worn camera program, even though we're on a five-year contract with Axon. At the end of this two-year cycle, we can go back and reapply for the grant to fund however long that grant period is. This is typically how it works with the state, but that grant is completely done, we should see that checked soon. On more of a, you know, sadder note, because the township is averaging one point six seven or more fatal crashes over a three-year period. We are eligible for a traffic grant that I argued with the state over our fatal numbers that they had wrong, because I went and did some of the research. So we have been awarded a three hundred and fifty hours called selective holiday enforcement program. So starting in next year in twenty-six, there is a grant program that focuses on causative factors of fatal crashes, distracted driving, seatbelt violations, reckless operation, excessive speed, OVI. We've been selected for a grant for that, I just wrote the grant, it's going to cover about twenty thousand dollars in just traffic enforcement and fringe benefits covered. It's kind of similar to our OVI task force grant, but we need to get our fadals down and we're going to get our fadals down. So, so that will run starting in April next year and then it's during clicker and ticket, the Fourth of July week, drives over, get pulled over campaigns, some of the, obviously July fourth is one of the dead days holidays out there when it comes to roadway fatalities. So we'll be out in force during that in two thousand, twenty-six, but I did get notified from the state about that grant coming. Next Monday, we will pick out our canine up at Shallow Creek Kennels up in Pennsylvania. And we, Sarge will be up there and LT will go up there and pick out the dog. And then we've got some things to kind of. A program that we're going to run, which was an idea of Sergeant Little and it's absolutely amazing. So all the, everybody at the schools is going to be notified of a battle of the schools that we are going to do to allow them to pick out the name of the dog. So it's a canned food drive that will go towards Ross and Morgan Ministries. So whichever school and all the teachers are on board with this, we've already talked to Dr. Rice, this is going out in final forms. So whichever school gets the most canned drives is going to be able to pick the name and then we're going to take the dog and have a rally at that school where they get to see the dog before everybody else does. So there are, we did pick a couple, four names that they have to choose from, but I want the community, you know, if you have kids going to the schools, grandparents, everybody get involved. Let's get a whole bunch of needs for the community, for Ross and Morgan. And then I'm sure that they're going to be making us check the count several times for the ability. I wanted to name the dog Rob, but they wouldn't let, they wouldn't let me put that on there. So we've got the four choices are Chaos Blitz, Ramsey and Echo. And all those have different meanings, Greek meanings, so the schools will get to pick them out, but it's going to be an awesome way to give back to the community and get everybody excited. and get everybody excited, um, for when the dog hits the streets in August.
Definitely win.
Um, so that starts May ninth through May sixteenth. Um, and the schools will be out there doing it. The teachers are gonna help, but it's gonna be a great partnership to us, uh, doing that. And then, uh, let me see, a couple more things. I know, yes, I'm trying to cut out a lot. So we also are partnering with Elda Elementary on what's called the Starfish Assignment. So I was notified by a teacher down there about a program where sworn law enforcement on a grant gets to read books to, um, the kids at the school. So we applied for that grant. It was a little bit short, but we wanted to read to every student at Elda for all the grades. So I got to pick the color books, the easy ones. I gave LT like the chapter books. It has like a hundred thousand words in it. But on, um, on May sixteenth, we are going to go down to school. So every child at Elda get a book from us that has a sticker that says compliments of Ross Township Police Department. We are gonna sit in the classrooms, read to all of them. They all have that same book and then they get to take that book, book home with them and keep it. Um, and it. You know, it cost us minimal. I think we only had to order thirty-one books to cover the rest of the kids at the school. The other three hundred came from this grant called a Starfish Assignment. So I'm excited about that. It's gonna be awesome. Like I said, I picked like the book that had three words and that was the end of the page.
Mine's gonna be a rub.
Yes, that's it. So, um, but we'll be down there, uh, me, LT, Sarge, uh, Madison. It had, as a part of the grant, has to be a sworn law enforcement officer. So we're gonna get our people in there. We'll be down there on two different times, going to all the classrooms. And it's gonna be a great experience. So I'm, I'm happy to report that we were worried we wouldn't get the books out before they, they ended for the year and we, we just got them in. It was a great idea by Sarge, um, and this teacher. So we're, we're gonna get that done. Um, you'll see a post out about, uh, Light Ohio Blue. That is a program that's, um. Basically, it's a way to connect with the communities and, uh, from May seventh through May seventeenth, uh, we will, I'm gonna put somewhere out here a blue light and I encourage all of our citizens to take one of their exterior lights and put a blue light out there. This is a statewide, um, campaign that we do. It's really, it's during, um, National Police Week and it's there to, um, I'll just, I'll just read it. It gets, uh, local law enforcement and communities and agencies to honor Ohio's fallen officers and to show support for those currently serving across the Buckeye State. So if you don't know, this is a staggering number, but, um, uh, the National Law Enforcement Memorial Fund, a law enforcement officer is killed in the line of duty on average every fifty-seven hours in the United States. So we wanna bring awareness during, um, Police Memorial Week and this is a great way to do it. Doesn't cost you a whole lot. I already got the blue lights for my house. Um, so they'll be out there and then we'll put one out here. But I encourage everybody in the community to get to your local hardware store, get a blue light. Um, May seventh through May seventeenth, we'll light Ohio blue. And it'll be all over the state. There'll be some caravans going through Columbus. Um, I'll have to see if we can get up there, but we're really busy with some other things going on right now. But it's a great campaign and it really, um, just brings awareness to how dangerous this job can be for law enforcement officers across the state. Um. Think, uh, I have one more or two more things. So I've received, um, I always like to read these and if you send me a citizen, uh, compliment, obviously if you send me a citizen complaint, I, I also read those. But I like to read citizen compliments that I get from people and I had two of them come in since our last meeting. Uh, P O Stamper and P O Vanderhar got a, um, compliment and I always call these, I always call, if you leave a message or you just send something anonymous, um, I make sure I fill these out and put them in their personnel files cause it's important for us to talk about the great work that our people do out there every day. And a lot of times it goes unnoticed. And then, uh, P O Stilts also got a, a citizen compliment from somebody that, uh, called in over a good job she did. So. I wanna thank them for the good work. Uh, the second, the last thing I have before the board, just our detective, uh, Detective Mick. Um, had several cases in, um, April that he investigated or put the patrol on, a DV case that he followed up. Um, a stolen vehicle recovery, um, a rape case that he did some DNA stuff to take up the BCI. Um, a theft case, uh, actually two theft cases and a fraud case just since our last meeting that, um, he's doing a great job. Part-time for us. He, he saves a lot of road hours in doing follow-ups and it really makes sure that the citizens are getting the best service when they have something that goes on and a problem in their life. So, uh, Detective Minnick's doing a great job out there. Other than that.
Are those closed or?
Yes, these are all closed.
Okay.
If he's got anything that's currently ongoing, he holds that off until he gets some figured all the way. So, uh, the last thing I have is, um, obviously a resolution, um, to accept the Ross Community Foundation Grant, thirty-two hundred dollars, which is going to cover the concrete pad for the dog, the, um, kennel, um, and the, uh, very sturdy fence that has to be around the dog. Um, as it's outside during the elements. And, uh, again, I can't thank, um, all the community groups that helped us get this done. It, it's amazing to see the outpouring of support and I, I thank the, uh, Ross Community Foundation and their board helping out, uh, with this part of the, of the cost. That's all I have for the board.
So the egg drop they had up there, Fran Hamlin was telling me, they figured it was fifteen hundred, two thousand people and he only had eight thousand eggs. So next year he's gonna get twenty thousand eggs.
It was crazy to watch that helicopter drop all of those eggs out. So, yeah, that video, I think, I put the video of the heli, for some reason helicopters generate a lot of videos. It had like twenty thousand views on our Facebook page of the helicopter egg drop. Last time I looked, so it was great. We passed down a lot of things to all the little kids that couldn't really get too close to it. Um, but it was, it was a huge turnout, um, up there. And so was, so was the Ross Lions Club. That was, there were so many people whose cars everywhere. Two great events to get out there.
All right, move for adoption, resolution twenty thousand twenty-five dash zero three one, accepting the terms and conditions for the K nine unit, uh, program grant from the Ross Community Foundation of appointing and authorizing police chief as a project manager to execute the grant terms and conditions establishing the grant fund number twenty-nine sixteen entitled Ross Township PD K nine unit project budgeting receipts and making appropriations and expenses and requesting the amended certificate and established, uh, res- resources for the Butler County Auditor. I need a second.
Second.
Any discussions? Go call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Yes, ma'am. Township business, any old business? Our EMS levies.
I know the last meeting, uh, Trustee Blower had asked me to come to the board with a number, uh, for our levy for this fall. We formed a levy committee that we met last Monday. And we've come up with the number of six point five mils. Um, right now we're at five point seven five. So this is less than one mil or. And to remind everybody, the other two levies will be combined to make this, this one and the current levies will go away. Um, that'll bring us an additional, just a little over one million dollars to the fire department. It'll cost the homeowner approximately a dollar a day. That amount.
Additional dollar a day.
Additional dollar a day, sorry, yes. That's, that's one, one of the selling points of the six point five. This, this should allow us to hire one more full-time firefighter medic and begin some of our capital, uh, projects and capital purchases we need next coming years. Should get us seven to eight years. I have to come back at that time depending on how we're doing. We, we've been operating on the same budget for fourteen years. My big. That shows a lot how Chief Miller ran and was very fiscally responsible with the taxpayers' money and continuing to do that. All I have on there. That'd be great.
So, um, may address the crowd out here, our, our big crowd. Um, get out and talk to your neighbors and talk to your, you know, everybody you know that lives in this area. Our fire department, as far as wages, is the lowest, just like our police department, is the lowest in this area. We have good departments. We get good people. We, they, they take, they take less for pay. And they're very community minded. And like you said, for the last fourteen years, we've been living on that same budget. That money was, was, what it generated was, was good then, but over a period of years with inflation and anything else going up is dwindled down and it, it's not gonna go anymore. So the new levy coming out will, if it, if it goes through, but the other two will drop off. Now, I realize there's a slight increase in, in that, but that will carry us through for like six years.
It's been at six to seven.
Yeah, before it starts dwindling down again. But, you know, um, we get, we get good people and we gotta give them, you gotta give these people some raises too to keep them. Otherwise gonna lose it. And was there full-time fireman, mate? Without being an officer or something like?
About sixty-three thousand, I believe.
And so people like Springdale, I think is a hundred and two thousand?
They're, they're, the city boxers hiring right now. They'll top out in three years at almost ninety thousand. And that's just a firefighter.
Right.
You know, captains are making over a hundred thousand a year up there.
In Fairfield, I think it's like ninety-five thousand for a firefighter. So we are way below, way below and we're losing people. Well, we haven't really lost that many, but it could, let's put it that way. If they decided the police department or the fire department, if they decided to go somewhere else, they would be welcome, open hands and have a big paycheck difference there. We got to start paying our people a bit more and we gotta get it out there so that people know.
We are losing some part-time people to full-time departments.
Right, yeah.
Like Hamilton.
Dave Black or?
Little Black. He's gonna be Hamilton next week.
But he's gonna stay with his.
He's gonna stay with us, but he'll be, he's on probation up there. I don't think he's gonna be ordered. So we lose him for a year. But he's a good spot.
So, and he's a young man. He's, you know, thinking about getting married and he, he's looking at, I need more money to satisfy my married life. And his wife. Um, so anyway, yeah, we gotta get this thing passed. I wish we had more time. So if it passes, the other three would just drop off when it comes due and this one will pick up. If it doesn't pass, the others will still be there and we, we have to try to get, get it passed again. But with our township growing slowly as it is, we still have to have adequate fire protection, medic protection, police protection. You know, it's, uh, something the state tells us we have to provide. And people say, they're always complaining about, well, my taxes are going up. Well, you know something? It's a fact of life. You know, death, concrete getting hardened, cracking to death and taxes going up. It's, it's how we fund things until the state changes them. Which I understand it might be some change coming up till that time. We had to, we had to live on our, our property taxes, which the school, I think, gets sixty-five percent of all the taxes. Well, for that, we get a mid-yearly or less. So anyway. My spew, anybody else want to discuss it, yeah?
Getting lanky like the chief of police over there. Chief, thank you for getting back with us in two weeks and also thank you to your committee who, uh, you, you met with on your own time um, to get, get it in front of the board. Appreciate it very much.
I, I think we need to, when we talk to the committee, uh, we need to focus in on the fact that there are capital needs and that doesn't mean, you know, giant expenditures, but we're talking about, uh, cots that are. Right. Brutally old. Um. So demonstrating that the need for the levy through the, you know, the, the capital, the capital needs that we have. Um, as Trustee Young said, there's, the township itself has increased needs. Um, there's increased population and, uh, those increased needs and this levy will also be a continual levy. That, that's one thing that I harped on with the poli, the police levy. I think Ross Township is at a point where we can't rely on the next levy passing or else. Um, failure simply isn't an option. The township's too big. There's too many needs. Um, so. You know, yes, it's a, it's a bite. I don't think it's, um, a terrible ask. Um, the fire department has operated fiscally responsible and balanced for years forever. And Chris isn't gonna change that. And they, they're operating on twenty-eleven funds. Now, who of us here can say we'd be okay paying our bills in twenty-twenty-five with the money we made in twenty-eleven, those of us who, who may still be working? Um, simply wouldn't happen. That's what they're being asked to do. Um, I think when that, when, when that, uh, levy was originally put in place, you may look for a levy to, to fund your department for five to seven years kind of a thing. You've gotten well beyond that from being frugal and fris- fiscally responsible. So I just wanna throw that in there and, and then to say, for the sake of the township, um, failure just really isn't an option here. Really isn't. Um, we're not asking for more than what we need. Or when Chris was talking, we're not talking about ginormous raises. Cost of living kind of raises. Um, how much is, how much are those strikers?
The cots are about seventy thousand, seventy-five thousand a piece.
You need three of them?
Three.
Okay, so, so in that money that's built into that, the need for tho, just those is two hundred and seventy-five to three hundred thousand dollars. And those have to be replaced.
Right.
And then you've got A, AED devices.
Cardiac monitors, we have four. They're about seventy thousand dollars a piece also.
Okay, so there's, there's over half the levy right there on, on the equipment that transports people to, um, you know, the emergency services, a hospital and keeps them alive until they get there.
Do the most important things we carry.
Yeah. Yeah, and probably most used.
Yes.
Yeah, so, um, I think the need's been demonstrated and I think the responsibility of the department's been demonstrated. So I, I met with, uh, with the, uh, levy committee. Uh, the people who are on that levy committee are extremely experienced with this kind of stuff. It was former chief Miller, um, former chief Don Bennett. Um. And, uh, Mark, Mark, Mark Bowling and An- Andrea Hatton, all people who are um, very, very experienced, very trustworthy and there was sort of an immediate agreement of the six point five. So, it's my two cents.
I got one other thing to say. I know I was pushing for a building. This levy would not, would not put any money towards that building. So I don't want people saying, well, they, they, they wanna raise our, our taxes to build that building. No, they will not. It's for the, the operation of the fire department. It's nothing to do with any building or anything like that. It's important for people to know that. Okay.
So for clarification, I should work with the prosecutor's office to prepare the first of the two required resolutions for a six point five mil continuous levy for fire and EMS.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're all in agreement on that.
All right, new business, request for approval of the village and farm and garden club to utilize the township administration building driveway for their Bucks the Blooms fundraiser event on May, Saturday, May seventeenth, two thousand twenty-five, from nine to twelve o'clock, June, let's put it that way. Scheduling, okay. We just, that's gonna be not a resolution, nothing we're just mentioning, okay?
Do, do we have any liability, uh, if it's in a driveway of, I mean, heaven forbid somebody get hurt. Is there any liability on the township's part for that?
Probably no more than in what we have when we have, uh, the police department having their ice cream, social, stuff like that. Basically the same thing. It's still all covered.
Yeah, somebody going to gloves.
For gloves ice cream.
Okay, okay, I'm good.
Is this the first time for this event? Never heard of it before.
Yeah, I think they've done it, but out by the medians possibly, but, um, ODAS has told them they can't do that anymore. They stand there with buckets at the intersections.
Yeah, Bucks the Bloom. Never heard of it before.
So, yes, they're looking to get off of the road.
All right, the rescheduling of June nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session due to the June teeth holiday. Okay, any, any discussion on that?
I don't need to reschedule. I'm not there to brought it up. Even how it is, if you want to.
Yeah, right, okay.
I just don't know.
I told you the fiscal, it doesn't.
Okay.
I've checked with the fiscal officer. She does. Uh, I've checked with the fiscal officer. She doesn't have a conflict. She said she was fine keeping it scheduled as it is.
So leave, leave it then.
Anything else on the board?
Over here.
Nope.
Announcements. Ross Township Board of Trustees will be conducting a special meeting on Ma- Monday, May nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five at six P M. The High Level Energy Emergency, I'm sorry, Operations Drill. The meeting will be held at Ross Township Administration Building on Hamilton, Hamilton Cleese Road. Anything on the board from that one?
I need to correct myself. The fire chief reminded me, we're actually gonna have this drill at Station one oh two. The room itself will allow for, uh, better accommodations for that drill. So I'm sorry.
Any else from the board? Correspondents. District ten, Public Works in, in Integrations Committee, P W I C, sent a ballot to vote for the township representative to serve for a three-year term ending May thirty-first, two thousand twenty-five, twenty-seven. That's a three-year term. Heck, it's only, that is actually two years. Um, each Ross Township trustee may submit their candidate selection to the township administrator by Friday, May ninth, May ninth, two thousand twenty-five. She will then compile the results and submit the township ballots by May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Did you get a ballot?
Yeah.
It's up here. Okay, I see. All right, mine, we got a ballot.
Can we get clarification on that? It says a three-year term. This says May thirtieth, thirty-first, twenty-two.
Uh, is this, is that misprinted on our side? It should be twenty-eight, not twenty-seven. We had not a three-year term.
For the record, we should probably get, make it two-year or change that date.
A leap year maybe, huh? All right, the Crosby Township Board of Trustees sent a notice to, uh, that the Ross, uh, the Crosby Township will be celebrating their hundred and tenth consecutive Memorial Day Parade on Sunday, May twenty-fifth at two o'clock. Willy Road will be needed to be closed near the community center for the approximately one hour as the parade route exceeds, proceeds to right of Oxford Road to New Haven Road Cemetery. I'm sorry. Uh, okay, so we all know that's gonna happen and go out there and celebrate. We have ours coming up too, though. Uh, any else from the board on that one? I know, topics on May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session.
Wait just a minute. Not, nothing about Crosby Township, but, and we're in correspondence still, right? Um, I did get some correspondence from a, uh, resident who has concerns about a business in Ross Township, a private business. It is, uh, I G A. Is there anyone here who, uh, would, would think there is anything this board can do toward a, toward a private business to encourage them to improve themselves?
It has come up once before about the same business and, and a township board of trustees can, cannot side or promote or anything of that nature with a private business.
Right, if you do it for one, you're gonna do it for all.
Yes.
So we are not to engage with a private business about-
On a personal, personal interest where you're not using your title.
Okay.
Have at it.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say as a representative of the township, we can't do it.
Okay, understood. Um, that's all I have.
If I have topics for May fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five work session, Minnesota, uh, overlay district. And anything else from the board on that one?
Um, yeah, so, something that came up and I, I meant to bring this up last meeting. I get, we all get this legislative priorities thing from the O T A. And one of the things, or well, two of the things are kind of, kind of related. Uh, registration of rental properties and regulation of group homes. That might be something we should talk about, um, in the township. Um, I can read this, but it might bore you. But registering rental properties and especially, um, group homes, uh, townships in urban areas are grappling with significant challenge due to the over-concentration of adult and youth group homes. These group homes, though ne- though necessary, have little oversight and can place an enormous burden on local public safety services. The frequent demands of these services are compounded by the behavioral issues and the outdated infrastructure of many of these homes make it clear that changes are necessary to manage the placement and oversight of these homes effectively. Um, I guess what they're saying is if you get too many of these type of homes on a certain street or within a certain geographic area, it might be burdensome to the community, um, to the public works. So that's probably something we should, uh, discuss, uh, in the future. Uh, if we want to, I don't know, say that we can have so many group homes per, or per square mile, you know, per.
Can we do that without?
So when you say group home, does this mean a, a home for, um, mentally retarded people?
It says here, the O T A requests the townships have the ability to limit, uh, the number of group homes within a geographical area and to specify. This is something that's being pushed, uh, in the hundred and thirty-six General Assembly. So if that passes, um, I, I don't know if it's been voted on yet. That's probably something we should talk about.
Self-rule for that?
I don't know. Just caught, it caught my eye when I was reading through this book. Same thing with registration of rental properties.
You get something like that, then you gotta have, have a committee keeping track of stuff. And I don't see where, you know, in the future, where a lot of group home will be coming in. But is that falling either a cult or is that something like a sort of health coming in and having a group home for people of, you know, needs? What kind of group home?
Well, in their definition here, I guess, is loosely defined, but newer concentration of adult and youth group home, which I guess group home is kind of a larger, kind of a catchphrase. You know, it could be people who are, um, providing foster care, essentially. I don't know.
I don't know. And, and I don't think it's funny, because it's foster care. You're working through the county as it is or the state. Or it can be a private company who has, um, adult living, two or three, and they oversee with a, uh, not necessarily a nurse, but an employee that goes to the residents, make sure they're fed, different things that happen during business hours. Um, I think there's no oversee at night. We, we only have, you know, I only know of one, um, I'm not gonna save the location.
I thought we had one.
One in the township. And in my seventeen, nine years on the fire, seventeen on the police, it's not been any trouble. I think because, not been in trouble, because management process. They get a, a, a management that doesn't do their part. They can, can run amok, but it's not been any trouble.
I don't know if it's related to a real- Does he, yeah. That caused quite a stir. I realized. I don't know if that's what they're referring to, but I'm wondering if that's what they're referring to.
That's, I guess it could go either way, mental.
That's what I'm referring to, um, or what I would be concerned with.
Drug-related.
Yeah.
Rehab.
Yeah.
Home.
Yep. I, I, like I said, I don't know of any problems, but, but when I read this and, and as Jennifer used to say in my other job, uh, I see a lot of it. I mean, some of our biggest clients are, are people who provide that kind of service and I see the need for the service. But is it something we would wanna look at? If, if given the, the opportunity to regulate, is it something we would wanna look at to regulate? Or we'll allow so many per whatever, square, square mile.
Worth to look into.
Okay.
If, if, you know, if it's bright, if it's caught your eye and something you wish to, um, could be further, then let's do so.
Okay, Pat, what did you say? Yeah, yeah, um, you know, if you get five on a street, then, 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 you know, there's possible issues. So I, I think it's something I'd like to-
At the May fourteenth work session?
No, I don't think it needs to go on a work session.
Okay.
Necessarily. Uh, I, I, if we can say table it based on the, the hundred and thirty-six G A approval or denial, if, if they allow us to, to have a little bit of, uh, say in it, then fine. If they don't, then, then it's, then it's a no point.
Okay.
That's all. That's all there is.
Well, folks, we're gonna go into the executive session, so we will end our meeting and, and don't forget our next meeting is May fourteenth here at six o'clock.
Actually it's-
Move for the adoption on that.
Uh, the next act is gonna be at Station one oh two. I have it in accurately. No, wait, the special meeting. I'm, I'm confused in everything.
The May nineteenth.
The work session, the date is changed. It is here. Special meeting. On the nineteenth.
Is it one oh two?
Is it one oh two?
All right, move for the adoption motion twenty-five dash zero five three to retard executive session to discuss employment dismissal, discipline, compensation of a public employee, investigation of charges and complaints against a public employee unless the public employee request a public hearing in four years of high revised code one two one dash two two G one. Time of the, point of our meeting is seven twenty-one. I need a second.
Second.
Discussion. We'll call.
Trustee McGurran?
Yes.
Trustee Blower?
Yes.
Trustee Young?
Thank you, folks.